I thought you were going to have a wild presentation here.
Yeah, because people get desperate. There's nothing else to buy and they need a place to live.
We'll call this meeting to the Montague County Board of Education. The order please rise for pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we reported we had no delegation superintendent, so let's move on to reports, discussions, and follow-up action.
Okay, first on our agenda this evening is Joe Arpaio auctions. This is an action item for the board. You saw in your executive file attachments, the documents related to this. This is related to the auctioning of our property at 13 South High Street and the Dorsey facility. So I am going to make a recommendation that we contract with Joe Arpaio auctions to conduct those auctions for the Board of Education.
Need a motion?
Second.
And do we have a representative?
Ethan Moore with Joe Arpaio's here.
Okay, alright, and just if you don't mind, and if the board has any questions, if you don't mind going to that podium over there, because we are live streaming.
There's Tia. Tia's walking in the door.
There's Tia, yeah.
She can just jump right to the podium. Way to make an entrance. You're fine. I just made a recommendation to the board to use your firm for the auction, and so this is their opportunity now to ask any questions that they might have.
Just to clarify for the public record, the way that you guys, the fee schedule with Joe Arpaio, how does that work? Where do you guys?
So the only cost to the county is the actual cost of advertising. And we were going to do a $1,500 budget per building, I believe, yes. And then the commission's paid by the buyer, so there's no commission paid by the county.
So this will happen by June 30th, is the plan?
Um, I wasn't aware of that. It usually takes about four to six weeks to do the advertising, so as soon as we have the green light, we can schedule an auction four to six weeks out.
So they'll be talking to you about the date specific, because I do know that there are, we've probably all gotten inquiries on some of these buildings. And so I just wanted to know, so we'll be able to tell the public when this is going to happen. And will it happen? In what location will this happen?
We have a few different options. We can sell them both from one location, or we can have each individual auction separately at each individual location. There'll be online bidding available, so of course anyone can bid without attending.
Yeah, I have a question. I was looking at the contracts. I know that we had discussed that we were not going to, there was a minimum that we were going to take, like the high bid was 10,000, we're not taking it, right?
Right, we'll say there'll be a minimum.
I looked at the contract, I couldn't find that, I may have missed it?
In the paragraph two, there's selling with or without reserve, and you would just select with reserve, and then you could fill out the amount there.
All in favor of superintendent's recommendation to contract Joe Arpaio auctions to sell two properties being Dorsey Avenue and the High Street slash Prairie Street properties signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same? Superintendent?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a short meeting, Tia.
Item B this evening is our discussion with the DLR group and our Renaissance Academy. I have shared with you a final version of their proposed contract to work with us. They do have a representative here. John has driven in from Washington DC today to be here, and Greg from Williamson Schreiber's here as well to answer any questions that the board may have about the contract. This particular section is not an action item, but I do have it in your agenda as a possible action item should the board be content with the discussion about the contract this evening. It will be there so that the board could approve the contract, and John and his team can hit the ground running, he'll probably just walk out the door after the vote, if it's a vote, and get to work. But again, John and Greg, if you don't mind, just moving to the podium there so we can get your voices on livestream. And the board, I'll just, I'll open it up for any questions that you may have. There's no motion at this point.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here at this step of, next step of Renaissance Academy.
Yes, any questions from the board?
I thought you were going to have a wild presentation here.
The presentation is this little bit of a book. Talk to me a little bit about oversight on the project, I guess, as far as from the DLR group down to the subs, and what, how that passes on to the actual physical structural architectural firm, and when that happens, and how you guys work with them, and just give us an overall conversation about the, because the one concern that would be a potential concern is the DLR is the experts here as far as the educational planning, and we got Williamson Schreiber here as the experts in the facility that makes that plan happen. So talk to us a little bit about where you guys are, and what conversations you've had, and how that will work.
So I would say we're delighted to be working with Williamson Schreiber. We've found a great partner. And generally, DLR group, if it's more than, a project's more than about two hours from our office, then we want to have a local partner, and certainly when we're in a state where we haven't built a school before, we absolutely must have a local partner, so we get all that local knowledge. So Williamson Schreiber's goal is to help with everything, help us with everything West Virginia, from the School Building Authority to construction codes and permitting and so on, site investigation. And then during the construction phase, you will see predominantly Williamson Schreiber, because they're close. Jason Shanty, who works with Greg, will be the main field representative and the construction administrator. So that we'll be reviewing some of the submittals that we need to, and we'll be working very closely with their team to really make sure it gets built right and on time.
So I guess my question would be, in the past, we've hired, I don't want to say outside firms, but I guess there were outside firms, to do the construction and program management representing the board. Is that going to be a necessity with this, the way you structure things, or not?
So that is open for discussion, and we will work through with your staff and the superintendent our recommendations for that. We do find it can be very helpful to have an owner's project manager, or a clerk of the works, or a team of some sort that's on the site every day. And also to be helping somewhat before you get to that point. In many projects, I advocate having cost estimates prepared by our team, but also by an independent team, so we can reconcile them. And if we can make sure we have a scope that's reconciled, if we don't reconcile the numbers, it gives us a range, which is useful. And that is often prepared by a construction manager, either at risk, or you may just choose to procure the project through a construction management at risk, in which case at a certain point, we would be comparing our cost estimates with their cost estimates.
I mean, I just know in the past on some of our construction projects, the builder may have put up a wall, the wall's not straight, and they, we had them removed and be done.
As you should.
I just think that can just...
I would defer to Greg about how often Jason will be here.
So when the project does move forward, and we have it under construction, we would probably go with our typical, every two weeks have a progress meeting. And in the past projects, you've had clerk of the works, you've utilized Eccles Group, and then you also had individuals that were by Montague County. So that would probably be something we'd also utilize to have that eyes on site every day, and then we are also overseeing it through our software, project management software. And then we're on site every two weeks as needed, and then during those complicated times, we can come up on a one week as needed, as long as we get that through. But right now, the contract you have in front of you is more for the upfront bond information, not for the construction portion of the project.
I guess I'm just trying to plan ahead in my mind what all the steps are in order for this to be done to your specifications, done to our specifications. So you will be producing, try to explain what this is to people around the state, or possible people who could help us work with funding from other sources. They're all talking, I start to describe it, and it's not something they're familiar with. So you'll be preparing pamphlets or something that we can share with individuals who may be interested in helping us find some financial support for this. You know, in my mind, the ground site itself is a former mining endeavor, and then also the other specifications that were in here for the energy, how we want to do that, and then the possibility of all the different programming that may be in there, and what that really will mean for the county and the state and others. So you would be the guys that would put all that together then?
Yes.
Okay, so the administrative team will work with you so we can put those things together, so we can start handing those things out. Because quite honestly, I don't know that some of our staff here is really 100, I don't think any of us are 100% sure what this really all entails and the possibilities that are there.
We recognize that internal communications are just as important as external communications, because your staff and your principals are all advocates for the project too. We plan to work very carefully with, or very closely with your communications team, so that we're keeping everybody on point, and we're developing the collateral that we need to support and generate the enthusiasm and interest in the project that's needed.
You know, realistically, it's going to be the principals and the staff of the schools that are going to get the questions. We'll get some of those, the administration's going to get some of those, but it's going to be more direct contact, I would think, with the boots-on-the-ground folks. So I almost feel like we'll need, we'll need to have several different things prepared so that the staff is comfortable with... so that the staff is comfortable with what this concept is and what this means. So that when we give these to outside groups that may be potential funders, that they're looking for certain things. I just think it's going to be, different groups are going to be interested in different information.
Yes. We, we're also, we just were talking about it a few minutes ago, proposing a stakeholder group to which we refer to get feedback from, input from all the way through the process. And those members should be collected, selected very carefully for their ability and eagerness to reach out into the community about the project to help generate enthusiasm, answer questions, make sure that people understand what it is. Or we'd be providing them also with, you know, collateral that they can use in that, in that process.
And realistically, the comprehensive educational facilities plan group that originally proposed this, that superintendent, deputy superintendent brought this whole concept to, that to me would be a good place to start, to find folks because they already have the buy-in and some of the edu- I, I really think this is going to be an educational effort on multiple levels with trying to inform people what it is, making sure our staff's comfortable with it. And then being able to move forward with the other steps we have in order for this to be successful. So. Lots of stuff to do. Thank you.
Talk to me about where we'll be once we get done the, the contract, we sign this contract and we complete this contract. Where will we be as far as our understanding of what this facility would be in the end?
So what we're actually working back from is the date for the bond referendum in May of 2024 and all the steps we need to do for that. So at the end of this phase, we will, at the end of this step rather, we will have a concept design which is based on educational specifications and owner's project requirements that you've approved. And that, that, upon that will be based a reconciled cost estimate for construction and total project cost on which the bond referendum will be based. And we'll have a very clear picture of how the project will proceed beyond that point.
And as part of this contract, you have a site due diligence study which will provide you information about the site as a whole. So that as you move forward, we'll do survey, we'll do boundary survey, we'll do topolat, or typographical survey. We'll have information about the mines, we'll have information about the geotechnical investigation. That will be utilized for the whole campus when the, when this project moves forward. It's not just focusing on the Renaissance Academy building. It's focusing the site investigation, due diligence study on the whole campus for future utilization.
So in fact, with that concept design, there will be a concept plan for how the full site might be developed in the future for buildings, projects. So you don't quite know what they are, but we'll have a plan for the overall placement of buildings. So that the, the due diligence we're doing now, as Greg says, is for the entire site and for future projects. This project has perhaps an abnormal site due diligence costs, but remember that they're going to be applied to future development on that site as well.
So basically, when you're done with that part, you'll be able to tell us where we could build or we can't build.
Yes. And where you may put future buildings. There may be some sort of a loop road where the access to the site will be. And how a plan for expanding utilities and so on as the site is developed with future buildings.
Do you want to vote on it tonight?
I doubt it. But you guys can, four people want to vote on it tonight? You guys, two people want to vote on it tonight?
Well, I mean, we're not comfortable going ahead at any point.
Well, the administrative team is, is comfortable with, with what we've seen. If you all need more time, the only thing I would say is, is that, you know, it's two weeks down the road that we've had to, they can't start.
Plus, I mean, they're, they're going backwards for the bond referendum. That's why I was thinking, sooner we get rolling.
The way we were looking at this, and we've had a meeting earlier today, just kind of discussing, everything is set basic on that May 14th date, I believe. That's Election Day, May 20, 14th, 2024. And we have certain things we have to do in order prior to that to get everything approved for a bond call. And then there's things we have to do as a design team as estimating, concept, site due diligence study that we have to do. And the longer we take to make a decision and move forward, the tighter that window becomes. And we have a lot of planning that we have to take into account. We have a lot of meetings where we have the stakeholders, the leadership groups and all that to try to schedule. And it'd be great to have an opportunity to move forward sooner than later.
We, we calculated that actually in order to meet that May 14th date, we need to have the costs ready for the bond referendum, really by the beginning of December of this year.
And also in conjunction with that, we've talked about meeting with the School Building Authority of West Virginia. We're going to keep them informed. And it's always been discussed that there could be an opportunity to perceive or to request funding from the School Building Authority for utilizing their name in your bond, bond grant. But until, and then even if you pass the bond, you still have to go through the process which will occur in 2024 for the need submission cycle. So there's stuff we have to do now between now and December. And then you pass the bond in May and there's still stuff you have to do next year to get SBA funding as well.
And the second meeting with them, we already had one, would be in December in order to get that authority to use their name in the bond referendum.
If you guys don't mind sticking around a little bit until we-
Let me, let me, I mean, if you guys, if you're, you're comfortable, is the, I mean, I stayed in motion.
I'll accept your recommendation.
Yeah, I, I recommend that we accept the contract as presented this evening.
Second?
Okay. I get one more question. And this is, this one is going to be, is important to the process. It's the most, probably the most important piece of this process.
Most important.
When, when should we have, what's that?
Was Dan here in the new contract?
Dan said it's on there as a new contract.
We're moving it, we're moving it up tonight. I just, I just took the executive privilege to do that. The, the most important piece of this whole thing is when do we need a, when do, in your opinion, do we need a professional? When do we need this principal?
When do we need?
The principal for the school. When do we, on the personnel side, in the past, in your, in your history? Because you said about stakeholder, number one stakeholder in this thing is the principal is going to be sitting in that, or in that building.
I've seen it all over the place, to be honest. Sometimes the principal is already in place. One that I worked on, on the staff side of the table, the principal was already in place before the process started. In others, the principal is, is hired about a year before and helps to, and works for a year before to get everything set up for the beginning of school. I don't know the circumstances here, whether there's somebody within the school district who, you know, would, would be considered for that position. I think more discussion is needed. Generally, the earlier the principal is known, the more influence they can have on the project. But you've got a tremendous staff here and you've got a huge advocate sitting right there with you this evening for this, who we're going to give it everything that they've got. So I would lean on them to advise you on when to hire the principal. There are financial considerations for that too.
But I think with that, with the financial implications of, of what everything is going on here, I think that person is the most important call we need to get when we keep working towards. Any other questions now that we're allowed to ask questions?
Essentially moved your head so hard.
Yeah. None? None? Okay. All in favor, let me get this right. The DLR Group contract for the Renaissance Academy as presented signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same? Yeah, well, I didn't want, I didn't want to wait till later in the meeting. You guys are going to get going, get to work.
Oh yeah, we need to start, right?
Phone calls on the way home.
I wanted, I wanted to make sure I gave anyone that didn't want the opportunity for the extra time. If anyone does.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
Okay, next. There's no moss growing on any of our rolling stones in the summer. Another construction project we have going on is at Brookhaven Elementary where we're redoing the, the roof there. And we have a couple of change orders this evening. We do have a representative from Ramp Construction with us this evening. And I'll have him introduce himself here in a second, but he's here to, to help the board understand why these change orders are needed. And of course Amanda is here as well, if you have any questions for Amanda. So again, if I could ask you folks to just move, maybe move over to the podium at this point. Amanda, you can just get close over there if you want to, in case they need you or anything. But the, the first one here is a change order for the wind warranty. And I will go ahead and allow him to explain that change. And then the board can make a decision there.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Miletta, the president of Ramp Construction. We have the privilege to work with you on this project. And upon removing the ballast, we naturally poke our head up in the ceiling every now and then before we put any screws in. And unfortunately, when we peeled the onion, we found out previous contractors had run conduits in the web of the metal deck. They also pulled conduit wires, data wires. We thought it was just an isolated area. We went around with the staff and we found out it's virtually all around the building. We brought the concern to Chris, well, Chris was there and witnessed it, and then to Amanda. And Amanda asked us to approach the manufacturer on options. We came up with two options. Well, the one option failed because we'd only get 55 mile an hour wind warranty. Manufacturer came back with an 80 and Amanda asked us to see if we could get a 90. For our business, we've been doing this for 26 years. We have an impeccable record with Firestone. We have a zero warranty claim. So Firestone believes in us. And after we did a little test sample, Firestone came back and gave us permission to offer the district a 90 mile an hour wind warranty. And that's, we provided the paperwork per Amanda. In that paperwork we sent in, we also included pictures and it's just about everywhere. On another note, we discovered that in the gymnasium, you have an exposed deck. So if there were screws, and there's also conduits in the gymnasium on the ceiling, electrical boxes, control boxes and things like that. If we were to use screws there, you'd be forever have balls stuck on the screws. The big concern is the electrical code, the NEC forbids any conduits or any wires within one and a half inches of the lowest part of the deck. These conduits and wires and everything are up in the flue. There's no guarantee we could not, we would not hit them. Unfortunately, if we were to hit one, it may not cause anything right now, but down the road, it could cause a serious condition. So we submitted the paperwork, the correspondence with the manufacturer for your consideration.
Amanda, did you want to add anything at this point?
No, I think, I mean, that, that covers the change order.
Okay. And I know in my conversation with you, Amanda, you had said you, you were in favor of the change order as long as we go with the 90 mile per hour.
Yes, the 90 mile per hour, that is what we bid the project on.
Okay. All right. And that's going to be possible, right?
That is possible. We did a little sample area. Firestone wanted us to do a sample area. We did a sample area and we got great adhesion. The benefit is, is your deck is in perfect condition. When we took up the insulation, your deck looked as nice as it did the day it was put down.
Mr. President, did you want to ask any questions or do you want me to make a recommendation first?
Now that I saw these pictures and I understand exactly what's going on. I just, wait for your recommendation.
I, I would like to recommend that we accept the change order for the 90 mile per hour warranty.
So I'm a-
Second?
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
So my question is, and this is only because I did have a moment to speak to superintendent. Following with all the bids that we got originally, this still meets all those criteria in the fact that, as I understood, we built it, we bid it with mechanical and we bid it also with glue, which basically now we're going to the glue. Correct? And they were still the most favorable bid under those circumstances.
They were the low bidder.
Yes, so-
And based on our test sample, we're able to reduce that price by $5,000. So we're extending an additional savings to the owner.
Well, I just want to be sure that everyone realizes we're still following all the proper protocols to approve this change order because-
Yes, we are.
I, I don't have, I don't have a problem with this change order. The reason I don't is now that I look at those pictures and understand what we're, what we're dealing with. I'm almost at a loss for words that we have conduit against the bottom of our metal decks. That is a, that is a condition that's unacceptable. It's dangerous. And he said about, can that cause a problem later? It could kill one of his people. So this is not, this is, I didn't know this. I thought when you was talking about mechanically fastened to, to glue. I thought you was talking about glue on the, glue in the rubber, the membrane to the insulation. So I don't have a problem whatsoever with this. And what I do have a problem with is, and what I'm going to request from, from your staff is to report anywhere else this exists in our system. Because this condition is unacceptable.
I believe, my son Matthews here, we documented about 14 or 15 different locations in the school we stopped.
In this school? I'm talking about, we have, we have 26 schools.
Fortunately, this school previously was a ballasted system, so no screws went through the deck. So we caught it and we're protected. But otherwise, we've had instances where a screw has gone through a deck and we got a phone call eight years later and they smelled smoke. So that's why we've learned to always, before we screw, similar to-
One of our maintenance people was up there and put a screw through it and they get-
Check before you dig also, the same thing. So unfortunately, it applies to roofing. And this is something nobody saw, nobody anticipated. Unfortunately, we caught it before we started dropping screws through the roof deck.
I just, I'd like to follow up on that point that you just made, just out of my own edification. Why didn't we know? I mean, when, when, when we decide, we actually asked for the glue originally. And all of the, the contractors requested from us and said, we can do this job cheaper for you. We can save you guys some money. Let's go the mechanical screw down way. And then three days into the job, we're being told that we can't do that anymore. How come we didn't know that ahead of time?
I think it's part of the process that no one looks up under the ceiling tile. We did it, you know, after we had the job, we're on the job, we're mobilized on the job. We had step ladders available to us, so we're able to take a look. It's just same thing. You call before you dig. Normally you don't call before you have the contract. You call when you have the contract. So it's unfortunate. I, it's not a design staff problem. It's not a contractor related problem. It's just somebody prior to us being there and before Amanda came to the district, someone took a shortcut. I don't think it was the original construction because there are properly placed conduits. This is something I believe happened afterwards. Telecommunications, data, things like that.
Do you have anything else, Amanda, as far as this? Okay. Any board members have any thing on this? Hearing none, all in favor of the Brookhaven Roof change order for wind warranty, and to be very clear, let me, I'm pulling back up, the ninety mile an hour wind warranty proposal for seventy-four, nine, twenty-three. All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? You ready for the second one? Yeah, usually, somebody falling off a roof is usually the danger in a roof trial. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Electrocuted.
I'm still thinking, it's just got my face red that, I think that that's the condition of our system right now. That bothers me. Because it's dangerous for people.
We certainly can follow up and go up on all of them and take a look at them, to make sure, I don't know how we get it fixed. Item D is again with the Brookhaven Roof, and this is a second change order that was, was brought to us. Again, I have spoken with Amanda about this, but I certainly wanted to give you an opportunity again to explain to the board what we're doing here and why this is being requested.
Upon disassembling the roof in preparation for doing the roofing, we took the coping off, and we found out that during the previous build, there was no wood blocking provided on top of the parapet wall. What's happening is your rubber goes up over an open cell block, and air can penetrate through that block. Firestone and all manufacturers require wood blocking to cover open cell blocks. Any coping manufacturer requires wood blocking, that the coping be fastened to wood blocking. The coping system gives you a twenty-year, one-hundred-and-twenty-mile wind warranty. That is the most expensive way to do the blocking. I put in a voluntary cost savings for your review, which is a fascia system. A fascia system is a heavy, I meant to bring the aluminum piece with me, I did not, it's an extruded heavy gauge aluminum, and it goes down the fascia and goes over the coping several inches, and it's fastened into the masonry. So by using plywood, we're able to close off the top of the block, and by using the fascia, we're able to give you a lifetime, two-hundred-and-fifteen-mile wind warranty, and saving you approximately thirty thousand dollars. So I wanted to give you the opportunity, and I talked to Amanda, that I got a request to put in a quote to do wood blocking, so I took it upon myself to do both things. She was on vacation, so we didn't want to bother her too much, but we wanted to give you all the options available. It is my recommendation personally, that I would go with the plywood and the fascia system. And that's gonna give you the cost savings, and more importantly, it's gonna give you a lifetime, two-hundred-and-fifteen mile an hour wind warranty on that. And that is the part of the roof that fails. The fascia or the coping, that's the strength of the roof from the wind getting up underneath it.
Amanda, did you want to add anything?
I just, I don't recommend the plywood, I just recommend the two-by-four.
Okay. And I know, board members, I did speak to Amanda, and that was what she had expressed to me, was that, her preference was that we, we take the, the change order for the wood blocking, and we go in, in that direction.
Can you explain a little bit more why you prefer one over the other? For those of us who don't know...
The wood blocking is a lot more stronger, and I just feel that it's, it's gonna last us a lot, a lot more to do wood blocking than plywood.
I might want to add on your existing addition, what they did was they put two-by-fours on either side, and then ran plywood over.
I am, I'm gonna go ahead and recommend that we accept the change order with the, the wood blocking, but...
Need a motion?
So Amanda?
I'll second. Now we can discuss it. So you're the builder, what's your thoughts?
Either system will work perfectly fine, and I'd save the thirty thousand dollars.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
I'm happy to change my recommendation.
Happy to listen.
I'll make the recommendation that we accept the change order and use the plywood.
She needs to rescind her...
We're small groups, it's fine. I'll rescind those motions myself, and Superintendent made a recommendation, plywood cap for fascia system. I need a motion.
Second.
Any conversation? I don't know who's coming back within the first twenty years if something fails, so... I, it's a good system, so we're good. Any questions? Okay, all in favor of the superintendent's recommendation for the plywood cap for fascia system, fifteen thousand, sixty-four dollars, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone can leave, except for the presidents.
All right, we are down to item number four. This is our School Performance Student Outcomes and Academics Report. Tonight, we're gonna talk about Panorama. So our local Panorama guru, Mike, is here with us tonight, he's making his way up to the podium there, and he's gonna share some information with you.
Good evening. So in the, towards the last two weeks of school, we ran our third and final Panorama student survey for the year. This is two full years that we've done the surveys. So we, we started in the spring of twenty-one, we have last year and then this year. So I'm gonna go over those results with you. I'm gonna do a comparison between beginning and the end of the, the school year for this year. So I'm going to start with three through five, it's broken up the way they do it, it's three through five elementary, and then our six through twelve. So we'll start with three through five. Our topics are challenging feelings, emission regulation, grit, and self-management. So you can see the comparison of where we were at the beginning of the year, and then where we're at at the end of the year, with everyone, every topic taking a dip percentage-wise of either two or one percent. I will say, when, in comparison to last year, those are still higher than, than we were at this point last year, but it was just coming into this year, we were, we were higher. We were making some strides, and we've kind of come back down a little bit in some of these areas. And then on the, on the right-hand side, you can see the comparison from the middle of the year. So typically, what you see when you do beginning, middle of the, middle, beginning, middle of the, and then end of the year survey, you see, you start off high, you take a dip in the middle, and then you come back up somewhere in the middle. So that's where you can see the increase or the decrease, or the no change at all. So this is our supports, so teacher-student relationships and valuing of school. So we're at a one, negative one percent difference from the beginning of the year. You can see the, the change from the middle of the year with three through five in those areas. And then you can see the benchmark compared nationally with other schools and students that complete their surveys through Panorama, where we are in the percentile of students percentage-wise. So even though we're at seventy-seven percent in teacher-student relationships, we're still in the upper eightieth to ninety-ninth percentile nationally compared to other students. And then valuing the school is fortieth to sixty percent. Anything within that forty to fifty-nine percent and above, they consider that, like in their, their green area, not a concern. So if you would go back to this one, grit, as you can see, is in the twentieth to thirty-ninth, that's an area of concern, but that's one we continue to make strides in. When we originally started the surveys of grit, we were at fifty-one percent, so we've continued to make strides in that one, and we were in the lower percentage there. So when we look at six through twelve, the well-being, you can see the, on the side there, where we're at percentage-wise from beginning to end, in those topic areas. Self-management was the, the big dip there with four percent down. We're still nationally in one of the upper percentiles. Grit with six through twelve historically, since we've started doing this with six through twelve, we've been at that lower percentile for grit. And those are the questions that went, you know, when you're, if you're unable to reach your goal, how often you continue to try to reach that goal, how easy do you give up on something? That's kind of some of those grit questions that they ask. So with the supports here, the student-teacher relationships, and valuing of school, you can see we're in the negatives there, too, for percentages. And benchmark nationally, we're in the lower percent, percentiles, too, in those areas when it comes to six through twelve. So one of the topics, challenging feelings, there's an open-ended response question that students fill out. And on the right, you'll see like the word bank of common, the most common words that are wrote down. So thinking about everything right now, what feels the hardest for you is the question. And then on the left-hand side, these are some of the answers that we get that falls into some of those words that are used a lot. So we're seeing a lot of, like having divorced parents, mom and dad not being together anymore, mom and dad fighting, parents always yelling at me, trying to meet my parents' expectations. Those are, when this is three through five, that we're seeing those. And the stress, they continue, I talked at the beginning of the year, the stress of continuing to juggle school and their extracurricular activities, schoolwork and work, theater scores, and we did do this, it was right at the end of state testing, so testing was one that we saw come up a lot, too. And parents putting so much pressure on me to do good in school. So you can see like parents, grade, mom, dad, brother, sister, just the family dynamic and stuff at home, sports, is, is kind of one of those things that we're, that our third through fifth graders are experiencing a lot right now. So when we looked at six through twelve, you can see schoolwork, grades, school year, the family, the mom, the dad, those things are still, still the same right now. So it's a little bit different, but it's still the same, same, same thoughts, basically. So keeping track of all my subjects. So I thought this one, you know, the students said they were getting addicted to their phone, so they weren't doing their schoolwork. So just being aware of that, staying on top of things like my grades and schoolwork, and staying focused on track and hockey, stress of growing up and ending high school. So I saw, if you look at your, if we looked at our eighth graders and our twelfth graders, just the transitions. So middle school was going to high school, and our seniors just, you know, moving on past high school and their next step of their lives. So just balancing everything, I think that's, our students are really struggling to find that balance in their life with so much going on, and the expectations of everything are higher than they used to be. We also do a teacher perception survey, I apologize, we do that K through five, not three through five, but it's K through five, so it's all throughout elementary. We ask teachers to answer questions on each student in their class on these different topics. So it's one question per topic area. At the beginning of the year, you can see that, you know, where teachers, their perception of students, where they were at, and then at the end of the year. And, you know, at the beginning of the year, they're still getting to know their students, learn about their students, and as they progress throughout the school year, you can see the difference, just the teacher perceptions of the progress students have made in certain areas, just with their social awareness, emission regulation, their class engagement, effort, grit, learning strategies, those type of things, as some of those bigger percentage jumps. So those are the, that's the data that I have for you tonight. You know, I think, you know, looking at the things as a whole, we don't like when we aren't progressing or making progress in things, but I think, you know, when we've, when you look at the bigger picture, which I'm, I'm doing a, like a cohort analysis of, looking at really our fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade graders who have taken it at least three times, and doing some comparisons across the board and seeing, you know, what grade levels are we seeing, you know, maybe some struggles or some declines compared to others, and how we can go about addressing some of those bigger dips that we're seeing. Especially, I think, as our upper elementary and our middle school, we're seeing some of those bigger dips. Once you get to high school, you start seeing that, once they get in eleventh and twelfth grade, they come back up again with just even the valuing of school, understanding the importance of it when they're thinking their life after high school. But, take any questions that you have?
How many students participate in that data?
Uh, well, it differs. So...
I mean, if it's only fifty percent of the kids participating, I don't know how much of that...
So it depends on the school. This year, I will say, usually, we're about seventy percent completion rate for the county, seventy to seventy-five. This year was just a little bit lower because with the high school, when we ran it, seniors were finishing up, it wasn't the right time. I will say, moving into next year, we're more than likely going to go back, push it back about five weeks to April, that's usually when we run it, we get a little bit better data there, and we get better participation. But historically, we're at that like seventy-six percent completion rate across the board. And then our teachers are like at ninety-nine percent completion on what they do for the students.
So ninety-nine percent of the teachers compete?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, well, for K through five, the teacher perception, ninety-nine percent of the teachers have filled it out. It's probably a hundred, I think, some of the ones that aren't filled out are the way we pull in the student rosters. We still have like some that show up from Weavis that are like homeschooled students that are still on our rosters, that teachers just can't fill those out. So it always shows up ninety-nine percent, but I'm pretty sure we're a hundred percent across the board there. So you can see the responses, six through twelve, so we have...
Well, it's kind of tough to see.
Thirty, about thirty-two hundred for six through twelve, and when we go back to three through five, it's about two thousand, third through fifth graders. And like I said...
I'm really fascinated with this. Next time, could you just send that to us, like in, in the board docs or something, so we can see this before?
Yeah.
I'm trying to read this stuff, I'm like Mr. Magoo, I'm looking at an eye chart here, I mean, I can't, I can't see anything, you know?
Yes, I can do that.
I can't discern, you're telling me what's up there, but it's tough to see.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep. Yes.
We actually could send it out to you. We'll send, we'll get Mike to, Teresa to send it out to you, so you'll have it. I'd appreciate that, thank you.
So each school gets these, and then each school tailors some of their goals for next year based on these?
Yeah, based off data, yes.
And I know you, so do you ever survey the administrators?
And for these?
Uh-huh.
No, we don't. The way Panorama, Panorama is set up, it doesn't have a function for specifically administrators, because it's all tailored towards students. So the teacher, even the teacher perceptions are on their class that they have. That's why we only do K through five, because it gets harder when you get to the middle and high school, because teachers could be filling it out on hundreds of students. So Panorama is not set up that, Panorama is not set up that way to survey administrators on this.
Well, then, is there something else we could get for administrators and six through twelve staff? Because the reason I'm, I'm wondering how much of these results is kind of now we're back in regular life, if you will, and when I look at actually the younger students who weren't used to things a certain way when they were out, and they're just kind of getting used to school. The older, the six through twelves, I look at it differently, because they started one way, had the time where they weren't together, weren't in, weren't trying to do everything remotely, and then they're back, and we've all discussed the fact that a lot of students and families feel over-scheduled, because they feel like they missed so much for two or three years. But I would just be curious to, as we try to... But I would just be curious to, as we try to support our staff, I would think some of that information would be helpful.
Yeah.
To know what everybody thinks about, about their schools and their jobs and the effect that they're actually able to have on their students. I mean, even when I look at where the dots are orange for us, I don't think they're horrible. I don't know, I don't know a nice way to say it. And I think unfortunately, the valuing of school is not all about the student. I mean, to me, that's a home value. And I still understand a lot of parents who value school, their students still may not want to go. I mean, and there's a disconnect usually for some, some folks. But I really, I mean, I, I'm glad that I feel like we're not losing that much ground, I guess is the best way I could say it. But I would like to know what other people think about what they're doing because we keep hearing about, you know, nationally, staff dissatisfaction on a variety of things. And I, I can hear different reasons from people on what they think is the most challenging thing, but we really don't have anything like this for anyone to fill out, to tell us what they really think is the biggest impediments.
Yeah, and that's something I can look at in my discussions with Panorama, something specifically, you know, tailored towards staff. What's nice about them is I meet with them bi-weekly, I have conversations with them, and they're always wanting feedback on what they can do to make the experience better. So that's something I can definitely look into. And then, you know, even if they don't have anything and there's something else out there that as a county, we would like to use for staff and administrators, we can always put it within the Panorama system to make it easy to collect that data and get reports from it.
So if I could interject, we do have something, and that's our professional development survey that we did just complete. The schools do have those results, and I think it's getting to just exactly what we're saying. Now, we don't have a composite yet. Hannover did that for us. We have really good spots and we've got several administrators here. I'd like to hear their thoughts on that. But I think it's to the very questions that you're asking and want more answers to about how our staff is feeling on, in various levels. So certainly there's a focus on what staff development is appropriate. We've done this survey now for two years. Last year, the biggest yield was that most staff development is better served when it's done on site at the schools, less county direction for the teachers, but individual in the schools. And we deliver that, that's what our academic coaches, our ed techs do. And we just had a fabulous, fabulous in-house staff development for three schools here. We called it Camp Elevate, done by our own individuals from our office and from several of the schools. I know Skyview, Mason Dixon, and Mountain View all were the benefactors of that particular training. But is anyone that wants to maybe share thoughts about what your professional development survey yielded or even what you're seeing within your own school?
Yeah, Jen, could you? Thank you.
Sorry, we make you all go over there.
It's the only way we can get that voice.
Use your teacher voice.
I can say that last year, we took our professional data from our professional development survey and used it to form mini PD sessions throughout the school year, before school, during DLCs, that sort of thing. And the beauty of that data is it also gave you some SEL data on your staff so you could focus some self-care types of things to support your staff and where they were feeling just a little, you know, for lack of a better word, wonky about coming back to the real world. So it really did provide us great opportunities to do things in-house with our experts at our school and driven by what the teachers needed and wanted. And do you want me to talk about Camp Elevate because I'm so excited about it, Donna? So Denise and Angela and I have the designation of being a CSI ATS school by the state because of our special ed subgroup and testing. And so we were given money from the State Department to do with what our staff and what we felt was warranted to grow our special ed population. But we felt like to grow our special ed population, we also needed to just focus on everybody in the school because every student belongs to every person at the school. So we came up with an idea and probably Dan and Jen will remember these back in the day when we did Project Enrich.
Best professional development they ever had here.
So we mimicked that between the three schools of ours. So the first, we, it was a two-day session and we used our state money, our state money to pay our teachers to come in the week after school was out. And we used experts from here in the board office and from all three of our schools and we pulled from some other schools as well. The first day, there were bigger chunks of sessions that our student, that our teachers went to. And then the second day, there was a course of 21 classes that they could elect to take throughout the day. They could do three in the morning, three in the afternoon, and they were all things that our teachers felt like they needed to grow professionally. And I must say, and Denise, you can probably speak as well, it was the most wonderful thing that we have done in a really long time at our, at our school levels. And we did a post-survey, Norma's still tabulating all those results, so I'm anxious to get a look at that. But it was nice to be in-house with the experts here. Our teachers felt valued, they felt seen. And then prior to Camp Elevate, we also sent out a PD survey to ask what they wanted. And the two biggest things that they wanted were they wanted local and then they wanted some national presenters. They felt that way because they felt that the local presenters, we could see people from around our county and hone in on the experts. And then they wanted some national presenters because they wanted to see what's out there in the world, just to see what's new and exciting, what's not in West Virginia, what they can do to grow our success. So we came off of that really feeling good. I don't know about Denise and Megan, you felt the same way, but it was amazing. Our teachers left happy, we all had cute shirts, you know, elementary, we like to do it up, so it was a great experience.
I just had a comment. First off, thank you for gathering all this. We've never had that snapshot, being able to look at things like this. And I know you can't change this, but it'd be really interesting. You talked about teacher perception. It'd be nice if we could get the parents' perception, especially on the stress, see if that matches with the students.
Yeah.
Students say, this is what's going on in my life. I'd be really curious to see if the parents see that same vision that the children are seeing. And I know that'll probably never happen, but it'd be nice to wish for that. But it's, it's nice to see the teacher perception versus the student perception.
Yeah.
And go from there. But that's just the comments I have. I keep wondering how we can engage the parents more, but I, teachers see it at the ground level, principals too. There's some of them that are really engaged, because one of them that always is, over these years, has struck me is that the students are stressed out because of what the parents expect of them. And I'm just curious if the parents see that same stress. And if they do, you know, how do they help that student get over that? I mean, as parents, you always want them to do the best they can do and best they can do, but at some point, sometimes I think the students are saying, this is all I've got.
Yeah.
You know, so sometimes you gotta level it out for a little bit and let them catch up and then, you know, juice them up again. But again, that's, that's the worthless information that I have right now.
I agree, if we could get a big enough, like a big enough sample size of parents, I, I do think it would be beneficial just to do the comparison.
Yeah, I look at this and it's like being on jury duty. You see this witness testify and this witness testify, and it's totally different stories and you think one of them's lying, but they're not. This is what they saw and this is what they saw. In their mind, they really believe it. And I, I just, I'm always concerned about if the perceptions were, if we're clear off base on all of them.
Yeah.
I'm done.
Most important part of data is implementation at the school level and making sure that we're using it for betterment of the students.
Yeah, definitely.
And if the staffs don't feel that way, that's probably the biggest part of your job is to make sure they value this information and it's something that can help them. We appreciate what, what you do and we, we always ask for data. And the fact that you're bringing it to us, that helps and it helps guide the administration also, the school level staff and the teachers, and that's important.
Definitely. What's nice about Panorama is they do, you know, do a lot of the reports for us. I am doing an even deeper dive from, for the county and I'm working on individual school stuff too that I can share out with administrators. That's my goal over this, the course of this summer, to really take a deeper, deeper dive and look at a lot of our subgroups too and do a lot of comparison between cohorts and across the board because that, I think that'd be beneficial as we move forward.
Thank you. Anything else, board members? Thank you for doing all that, Mike. That's really impressive.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, we're down to item five, new contracts. We have several for you this evening. We have knocked out the first one and I thank you for that. We're excited to move forward with that. Item B is, I'll make sure I say it right.
Turn it in.
Turn it in. Turn it in LLC master registration agreement. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the agreement as presented in your executive content.
Any motion?
I got Jen as a second.
And the board members, this is a anti-plagiarism software package.
There goes my book deal.
Hearing none, all in favor of the Turn It In LLC master registration agreement, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Voted the same, thank you, Superintendent.
Item C is the Clay Patel High School Nike BSN reward agreement. Again, you've seen the agreement in your executive content. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the agreement as presented.
Second.
Mr. Cottrell's here, if anybody has any questions about it.
Board members? Hearing none, all in favor of Clay Patel High School Nike BSN reward agreement as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Voted the same, Superintendent.
Item D is our awarding of our Chromebook RFP bid. As you saw in your notes there, my recommendation is to award this to CDW. They, they met all of the criteria that we requested, including 0% financing, and they were the lowest bid that, that came in. Other details there, as you can see, the bid was out from May 12th to the 31st. We got 19 people had contacted Chris about the package. We did only have five companies respond and we had a total of six bids. The breakdown matrix is there for your review, but I will recommend that we award the contract to CDW.
Need a motion?
Second.
All right, any questions from the board members? Hearing none, all in favor of awarding of the Chromebook RFP bid to CDW as recommended, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Voted the same, Superintendent.
Chris, thank you for working on that and putting that all together. I know she's happy with that.
And thank you for saving us. That's a really good bid.
All right, last on our contract list here is the, I think this is our self-made title, The Three Doctors, is it Salome?
Yes.
Okay, Salome Thomas?
He calls himself Principal L.
Yeah, Principal L. Yeah, this is for our administrative retreat. This is a contract for this speaker. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the contract for Salome Thomas.
And the two others that are also there, Dr. Vori and Dr. Jones, it's for three different.
They're all, all three are coming, that's why they.
And three doctors.
Yeah. Somebody was trying to be cute.
Second.
So that's 18,000 for all three of them, includes expenses?
Yes.
They're actually under consent because we use a speaker bureau that we contract them. Yes, individual, so they're under consent.
All right, any questions, board members?
Are they good?
You had your, we'll know August 2nd.
I was gonna say, are they good? That's my, I mean, has anyone heard them before?
Actually, two of them we have heard. We, Dr., Principal L has not been here, but yes, and they have a wide following on social media. We actually were able to have two of them here during COVID when we really weren't able to do anything except distance, but we still obviously felt that their book, Passionate Leadership, had some amazing ideas, which I think our principals could speak to because again, it's about building leadership capacity. So much of what you see is right here this evening and this is how we get there.
Does anybody want to speak to that or? Not that I'm putting you on the spot, you don't have to.
I know, I know for me, it gives me the opportunity.
That'll teach you.
I know for me that I've been to the summer retreats seven years now and it gives me the opportunity to center and to settle and maybe not, maybe, it just gives me the opportunity to see a speaker and hear a speaker who's energetic and excited about the topic in their content that I may not have investigated before. And then they do have a wide social media following, so it gives the opportunity throughout the year to continue to follow that person in particular. I know last summer, we heard Andy Jacks and he did a book about discipline and he brought together research and he was, he's a principal in a school and so energetic and had so many ideas about how he relates to kids and the importance of building relationships and how that relates to discipline. So it just, it excites us, I think, and it gets us going for a new school year and maybe brings up some things that I, I know for myself, I wasn't necessarily thinking about ahead of time and it just gives you a chance to settle and meet with some other administrators in and off-site that you don't get to talk to on a day-to-day basis when you're in the building trying to make things happen. So for me anyway, it's always been a refreshing experience to go on these. So I'm, I'm always grateful that, that that opportunity is there for us.
That's all I needed to hear. Do you like it? I'm on board.
Okay, any other questions, board members? All in favor of the Three Doctors Salome Thomas Agreement as Presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same, Superintendent. Sorry, Dan, for rushing.
We're ready for our consent agenda, I believe. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented to include expenditures exceeding $3,000. And just as a note there, Nicole, I think, did a great job. There's, there's two documents there in your file. One is to clean up the end of the year and the second one are things that we're already looking for in the 2024 fiscal year. We won't release those purchase orders until, to July 1st. So there's two different documents to look at there. So expenditures exceeding 3,000. Item B are the supplements and transfers. Item C, the payment of salaries and accounts payable. Item D is our MVB banking services, a one-year extension. Item E is our Panorama Agreement at University High School. Item F is our Burlington Agreement. Item G is our Epic MOU. Item H is the Premier Speakers Bureau. Item I is the Executive Speakers Bureau. Item J is our Weavis Technical Services MOU. Item K is our MOU with West Virginia for School-Based Probation Officer. And item L is our MOU, College of Applied Human Sciences, School of Sports Sciences. Item M is our MOU with WVU. Item N is our Practicum Agreement with WVU Department of Psychology and the WVU RC Agreement. Item O is our Glenn Mark Promissory Note for the Saberton property this building we're in. Item P are our field experiences and to close out our long list, item Q, which are your minutes?
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Board members?
A question about A, let's see, expenditures exceeding three thousand dollars, the item number five, about forty-eight thousand dollars at.
The mine up. You know what that is? Stonewall Retreat.
Stonewall Retreat. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It has to be more than that. I don't see anything on there for lodging, compensation for principals, looks like about eighty-seven, eighty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cent round trip if they're paying, we're paying them to go, right? I mean, is this, is this, right, right.
It does not include mileage, no.
Okay, so.
That is for everything else though, however. It's, it's lodging.
Oh, it is lodging.
Oh, yes.
Because I didn't see lodging on here, so, okay.
And it's, it's a comprehensive package. Last year, I think it was forty-three thousand. We over, always overestimate because it never really gets to the same amount that you have there, but that's the contract. You know, our records will show we paid forty-three thousand last year. It's for everything but mileage.
That's what she was explaining.
For three days.
I'm all about keeping the money in the county. I mean, I, good for Lewis County getting all those room taxes and everything, but I mean, could it be done at the waterfront? See, all the, I mean, principals, I mean, principals, first week of August, I would say that's crunch time and they'd probably be a lot closer. I don't know, maybe, maybe principals like to get away, but would you rather go to Stonewall than Morgantown at waterfront? Why don't you would? Yeah.
I will say, I do appreciate being able to get away. I devote everything to my school, but it's hard to plan. Going to Stonewall gives me that, I don't know, I come back refreshed. I, the speakers we have, I come back ready to, I feel like you have to have a vision when you start the school year and we have the speakers and we go there and we get that. So when I come back, I'm ready for that, so I definitely appreciate going there.
Being the most senior of all of my colleagues anymore, I, I can, I agree with Kim and yes, the waterfront's in Mon County and it's handy and that kind of thing, but we're much better served being further away because if we're in Morgantown, the phone's still gonna ring, there's gonna be things that we're gonna have to work on and here, at least we're far enough away, sometimes reception's not the greatest in the world, but if we're around, we're, at that time of the year, I agree, Dan, it is crunch time and that kind of thing, but also it gets us away till we can focus on what we need to do. There's a reason that we're the county that we are and there's a reason that all of us in this room are what we are and a lot of that is the staff development, things that Donna and Sandy and the folks come up with. So as you can see tonight, a lot of us support that, so, and we appreciate your support as well.
I just want to talk about the team building that we do and it is getting away, but it's a lot about, we do get to see this speaker, that speaker, but it's all about team building and I think that's a huge part of our profession and it's something that we really look forward to. I know I look forward to it. This will be my ninth, I believe.
Yeah, thank you. On top of what everyone else has said already, just being away, you know, we, we plan on this every year, so we know this is coming and, you know, it's like, all right, when's this gonna be? They make sure we know that. We mark it sometimes, you know, months ahead, a year ahead sometimes, and we, we really do come together as a group because as Kim was saying, we get energized there, but we also, as a county, we have time to plan the evenings outside the speakers and really the goals that we set for the year, we really galvanize and that's why we're in unison with that. So definitely like to go there. Thank you.
For the board members, if you don't know me, my name is Rich Santorum. I'm an assistant principal at University High and as a new administrator, there's a lot of value in, in what we get to do down at Stonewall, to be honest. I didn't get to, to, to work with a lot of folks, you know, outside of my building because it's a very busy day, so it gives me the opportunity to, to work with other administrators throughout the county and then also other directors at the board office. And, you know, my, my prime example for you tonight is that I had a, a great conversation with Mr. Harris, our transportation director, and we wound up cultivating a relationship that when we came back from Stonewall, we, you know, we worked hard for each other and I, I would do anything to help him out and the same thing, you know, for, for him, but, you know, that, that, that relationship didn't happen in, in a meeting or a PLC. That relationship happened over breakfast while we were down there and, and we were doing our thing. So it was all about the immersion and as everybody said before, we're, we're there, we're focused, but then we also get to kinda, you know, get to know each other on a personal level and I think that, that, that helps us to build the relationships that we can then communicate once we come back and be a cohesive team for the county and for our kids. Thank you.
Well, the reason I brought it up is, like I said, I, I have your interest in mind and I didn't know if being an hour and a half away was worth it, but you sold me.
Worth the waterfront, the week before that. All right. Yeah, okay.
All right, Mike, I accept that.
I think that many of us in here wear many hats and for me, going to Stonewall gives me a chance to just keep my administrator hat on. If I'm local, I've got my kids, "Mom, I need this, Mom, I need that," and I'm rushing out or I'm thinking about all the things that I, my, my side hats. So when we leave, there is no, "Mom, I need this, Mom, I need that." That's call your dad. You know, I, it's, it's me being able to focus and keep my thoughts and everything on what I'm doing and, and like everybody just said, getting refreshed and, and getting that vision and just ready to start the year.
I've been around for a long time in regards to always being a professional learner. I want to continue to grow and I want to continue to learn, but more importantly, as many of us in here, our school year is devoted to our staff, our students, our families, our community and to just Montague County in general. I don't want to take time out during the school year to find opportunities for me to continue to grow and that is one reason I do definitely love the summer retreat so that I'm able to fulfill what I need educationally, what I need to continue to do my job and then so that I can continue to love my school, be there for them throughout the year and be there and be present and that's what makes this summer opportunity great so that I'm able to be at South every day. So, thank you, guys.
I did tell you that you sold me, right? You know what I'm saying? I'm on board now, okay?
I was gonna, I was gonna make some points too, myself. I mean, it gives you guys an opportunity to get away. You don't have to worry about walking around the corner and Johnny that's in first grade at your school walks up and says, "Hey, how you doing?" It's just a chance to get away and I took care of one thing this year for, because the DNR officer keeps harassing us every year about the, the card games, which are innocent as can be, just fun card games, and they said, "You can't do that here." And I have the, I got ahold of the head of the DNR and I will have a letter for this one, so when he walks around the corner, we'll send him a letter. So, so, yeah. I took that personally, because why, why harass us?
I can just add that, like, they've said it all, but it is the single best thing we do for our administrators in this county, but hands down, bar none, it's needed. I've been there, I know.
I was gonna say, we had that same thing with school board meetings in Charleston. Sometimes you just get away so you can focus on that one thing. What I love about all that is the networking. You guys, I'm sure, go for breakfast, talk about, "Well, I had this problem" and maybe this principal said, "Well, we had that and this is how we solved it." So I think that, that networking is very valuable to you and to us, working out those problems, so.
Have we ever thought about doing something like this for teachers? Be a big, big group?
Well, the state is doing, that is their big conference that Mike referenced here. In fact, this whole town, every room is booked. Now, of course, love, people love to come to Morgantown, so half the state is in Morgantown, the other half is in Charleston. But the week before, the week of the 25th, I think it is, all our schools are going to be participating. Now, not every teacher because frankly, it does, they don't have enough room, but we do have several teachers from every school. The state, of course, is paying them and providing basically the same thing. As a matter of fact, one of the speakers that I have lined up for us, because it always seems the state finds speakers that we've already found, and so our teachers will get to hear one of these premier speakers. I spoke with the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum at the State today and we, we talked through our, both of our programs and our agendas here. So I think that will be something. It would be lovely to do something more like that for our teachers. And again, we're, we're relying though on what the surveys tell us, they want to have something at their school and as you heard from Ms. Cox, Camp Elevate was top-notch. But we, we look at layers of training and that does make Montague County who we are because we invest so much in every realm, our nurses, our teachers, our administrators. And for this particular thing, for me, it's about building leadership capacity and that's why we are at, at the top of the state on almost every area, so, yes, I think, I think it's good for everyone.
Any other comments on the consent?
I have a question.
Consent agenda? I was thinking, we saw it, it's consent.
Something much worse. I want to talk about the Weavis Technical MOU. Is Weavis working?
Looked at, it's only five, it's five thousand dollars.
Oh, I know, but I just want to know if Weavis is working since we have all these people here who work with Weavis and I know it's been a.
It's been a year.
It's been a year and I, are we gonna have that same year next year or have they worked out the buzz?
It's slowly but surely and these are the people that deal with it all the time. It was a nightmare at the beginning. I think everybody agrees with that. It has improved over the year. It is better. There are still issues with attendance which they just did a fix for, we hope, and there was another area, so they're always, they're still having to fix and it, it is much better than it was. I don't know, if somebody else wants to say something in that regard, but.
We, for scheduling, I think it would be wonderful would we get there. When it really is. The only reason I ask because I did have, we talked about it with the legislators when they were here. They were under the impression everything was all hunky-dory and fixed and so then when we, I think some of us had the opportunity to see them a couple of months later and were like, you know, Weavis is still, and they're like, "Oh, they told us." It was wonderful and so I just wondered if it was wonderful or if it's still a work in progress.
We, we were sort of a trial case with the scheduling and Scott sort of own worked with, with us as we were doing the scheduling and, and when we finished school, we have all of our kids except the incoming sixth grader scheduled and schedules are balanced right now, so unless something happens over the summer and that goes away, we're, we're in a good place because of scheduling right now, so.
Oh, don't say that.
And Scott wanted to use us because of the size and, and that kind of thing, so that part of it has been good. Other parts of it, and as Mrs. Tellerico said, it's gotten better from where we started. I mean, and where we started in August to now has been improved and they're fixing the little forks in it.
So hopefully we'll be able to print out transcripts and.
Oh, yeah, we can.
Attendance, staff and discipline reports. That would be lovely.
Yes.
Attendance.
Yes, attendance has been huge for us.
From a health perspective, we're, they're maintaining strides. We've come probably ninety percent since the beginning of the year. We now have access to our immunizations, to our screenings. It's my understanding that by the end of the summer, we will be able to run the reports that we need, but it's definitely, definitely improved since the beginning of the year.
Thank you.
Hearing no more conversation, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Voted the same. Superintendent, let's get into discussions and follow-up action.
First item is Accounts Payable Addendum A and I do believe Mr. Berry will have to excuse himself for this. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Accounts Payable Addendum A as presented in your executive content.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Voted the same.
I was gonna say, I'll tell him because I have to leave for the next one.
Item B is Accounts Payable Addendum B and Mr. Kelly has excused himself from the room.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve Accounts Payable Addendum B as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, any questions? All in favor of Accounts Payable Addendum B as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Voted the same.
Accounts Payable C. I don't think anybody has to leave on this one, do they?
Nancy, is getting him or leaving?
Nancy did.
Did she leave for a reason?
I don't know.
Does she need, does she need to recuse herself?
Oh, she went, she's the travel, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry. Item C is Accounts Payable Addendum C. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Accounts Payable Addendum C as presented.
So moved. Second. Any questions? All in favor of Accounts Payable Addendum C, signify by aye.
Aye.
Voted the same. Thank you.
Item D is our workers' compensation carrier. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the suggested workers' compensation carrier as presented. The information is in your executive file and Nicole certainly can answer any questions related to that as well.
Need a motion?
Moved. Second.
Thank you. Board members?
So is this the same carrier we've been with or this is different?
We currently have Incova and the, the recommendation is for us to stay with Incova. The difference was only sixty-nine dollars. If we do, if we were to switch to Travelers, then we would have other costs associated with it as well. We would have to learn the new software system, we would have, we would have printing costs and then we're very fortunate with Incova that we have a local representative, that we have a lot, a lot of meetings with this person and we're able to come up with different ideas to be able to bring our employees back to work.
Is it, I mean, I, is, is the justification of our expense a reason to choose one over another? Is that a legal offense?
Yes, we're, we're, it's legally accepted.
If we're within our.
Yes.
I was just making sure because I just didn't know if we could do that. Okay. Hearing no more conversation, all in favor of the workers' compensation carrier as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Voted the same. Okay, Superintendent.
All right. Last on our list here, item E is an early graduation request. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the graduation, the early graduation request.
So moved? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the early graduation request as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same. Too late for me to update anybody on anything. Anybody have something?
Well, yeah, I'm glad all three principals are here from the high schools. Mr. Cochran, Malcolm, Ms. Green. Uh, I was so impressed with the graduation. I mean, you all did a fantastic job. I know you had a lot of help behind the scenes. But, um, you're the leaders and, and it went flawlessly and I, I applaud you. Great job.
You even ordered up some nice weather.
Yes.
I have that footage for next year, too.
Thank you.
I have a, an update on the MPO. We're gonna meet this Thursday. But, uh, Bill Austin, the director, and I met with the, uh, Dominion Post Editorial Board to kind of bring them up to speed as to what's kind of happened, um, in the past. But the MPO's kind of taken on another avenue of, um, the federal guidelines is, uh, designating river highways. So now our highway here, the Monongahela, is Highway 79, River Waterway 79, however you want to put it. But what that allows is for, um, uh, commercial shipping, those types of things. Where in the past it was each individual city would take on agreeing to that. And then Parkersburg couldn't agree with Morgantown or whatever. So now the MPO will be, uh, entertaining, uh, different projects that would come on. Meaning instead of just barge traffic, it could be container traffic. So they would bring it in, maybe by rail, build new facilities, load them on, ship them, you know, basically down the Mississippi and wherever they need to go. So, um, I'm pretty fascinated by that part of it because we've kind of went backwards but forwards because the river waterways were our highways back in the early days. And so I think that's a, a, a great thing to be happening now and I think it's going to increase. And I was very impressed that the Upper Mon River Conservancy, which is the Pleasure Craft, they were on board with this designation too. So I think that'll help with getting the locks open better for the, uh, Pleasure Crafts too. So I think it's kind of a win-win for everybody. And then there's another, I don't want to bore you with all the details, but the MPO's never had any. Well, the only thing we have is veto power. If the state presented a project and they were going to use federal funds, if we didn't like it, we could just say no, but we couldn't tell them, here's where we want you to do it. So now the, uh, federal government's giving us a little bit more leeway there. We have some, uh, matchable funds. So if, say for example, if the city of Morgantown wanted to start a project and they were willing to fund half of it, we would have the ability to fund the other half of it. And we've never had that before. So I think there'll be a lot of projects that will, um, and there's a dollar amount, not, it's escaped me right now, but it's a, a lot of money that, uh, is available there. But anyway, as well, we'll be back with the editorial board. I don't know when. I probably stole your thunder, but I, at some point, I guess, we'll be in the newspaper. But, uh, again, we have a meeting, uh, Thursday night and it streams. So if anybody's bored and out of beer or wants to tune in, we'll be right there. And Dan's nodding his head because he has to cover it. That's all I have.
Okay, superintendent, let's get to some policies.
Yes, we do have several policies to look at this evening. First is, uh, Policy 2114, Meeting State Accountability Measures. This is for first reading. You've seen this before. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 2114 for first reading.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Um, any questions, comments, and the board members? Okay, all in favor of Policy 2114, Meeting State Accountability Measures for first read, going first reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same. Superintendent.
Uh, next is Policy 2120, District Can School Improvement. Again, this is for first reading. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 2120 for first reading.
So moved. Thank you. Any questions, board members? Okay, all in favor of 20, Policy 2120, District Can School Improvement for first reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Superintendent.
And then our final for first reading is Policy 2230, Program of Study, Early and Elementary Learning Programs, Grades Pre-K Through 5. This is also for first reading. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 2230 for first reading this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of Policy 2230, Program of Study Early in Elementary Learning Programs, Grades Pre-K Through 5, First Reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same. Thank you, superintendent.
All right. Item D, this is for second reading and adoption this evening. This is Policy 8600.04, Bus Operator Certification. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 8600.04 for adoption.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
We received no comments.
On any of them?
On any of them.
Right.
Right up the bar. All right, board members? All right, hearing no comments, all in favor of Policy 8600.04, Bus Operator Certification for second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same? Thank you. Superintendent.
Uh, next is Policy 9270, Home Instruction. This is for second reading and adoption. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 9270 for second reading and adoption.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the board? Hearing none, all in favor of Policy 9270, Home Instruction for Second Reading and Adoption, signify by aye. All right.
Aye.
Opposed? Superintendent.
Our last policy this evening is 9505. This is Charter Schools. This is for second reading and adoption. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 9505 for second reading and adoption.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of Policy 9505, Charter Schools for Second Reading and Adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same? All right, superintendent, let's hire some people.
Okay. We'll move down to our Personnel Matters. First is our regular personnel list. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list as presented. I have no changes.
Okay. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the personnel list as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Superintendent.
Uh, next are our New Positions Request. Uh, this is item B. Uh, I do have two new positions that I am asking the, uh, the board to approve. Uh, one being a new professional position, uh, a kindergarten teacher at Ridgedale Elementary. And to go with that will be an ECAT 3 paraprofessional aide, uh, also at Ridgedale Elementary.
Okay, any motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Uh, board members, any questions or comments on these new positions?
So how many rooms are still open at Ridgedale since we did the double decker addition?
I'm just curious. Ms. Petit is here. Uh, we are, we are, uh, we're closing in here. And, uh, Ridgedale continues to grow. That's why we're adding, we're up to 91 kindergarten students. Uh, so basically we need, uh, not three teachers, but four teachers there. And, uh, yes, we're, we're talking about the growth. Uh, Ms. Petit mentioned that carefully, but we are, uh, we are continuing to see big growth. Uh, and so I'm sure at some point, we will have to look at how we address that growth.
Right now, Sherry, we're still, we're still, uh, okay at this point.
Yeah, I think we're gonna be okay this year, but we do have significant growth. And the addition of the fourth kindergarten, which is only a good fact, has continued to go. We have four pre-k's in there and, um, our numbers are very high. And they seem to grow daily, which is a good thing. We're excited about it.
So that, that would be the fourth?
That'd be the fourth.
That'd be your fourth kindergarten with 91?
Altogether.
Oh, my goodness, I would argue you added another kindergarten teacher. I mean, that's.
We want to announce out there we're four.
Then there's some space issue.
Yeah, yeah.
But all of our kindergartens are looking like that. I mean, we're glad that, to have the numbers. And right now, we're balancing out. Uh, again, some families ask for transfers, so Scott, Danica, and I sit down because of issues with daycare or grandparents or work or whatever. So we will sit down here in about a week and balance those numbers. And we may be back, uh, with, uh, with needs.
Okay. All in favor of the superintendent's recommendation for the two new positions, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same?
All right. Next is our Personnel List Addendum. I have no changes there. I recommend that the board approve the addendum as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, board members, any questions or comments on these? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of the Personnel List Addendum as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you.
Our final personnel, uh, item for this evening is the approval of our fiscal year 2024 salary schedules, which you do annually. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the salary schedules as presented in your executive attachment.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Of course I have questions. So, is, does this reflect the, uh, levy money that's added on to the salaries?
Yes.
Okay, so all the salary schedules do do that. Um, and then our 261 employees?
So the salary schedules are based on a 200-day contract. So you would have to prorate those amounts to get to 261.
Okay. And our 261ers actually end up being 1.3 about?
For service they do, but for professionals, they do not. They're just 1 FTE.
Okay, so they're still counted as 1 FTE for the professionals. Okay. But I think that's something else we need to keep remembering. That's what makes, that's the other thing that makes Montague County different. Yes, that most of the counties do not have 261 administrative employees. So, and I think that's confusing to the general public. And actually, to a lot of people, they're still in the system. I don't think they realize that, uh, you know, a lot of counties, the administrators are there, what, 220, maybe, 240? It just depends. It's all different depending on your classification. And in some counties, only the superintendent's there for the summer. So, makes a big difference.
Okay. Thank you for your clarification. All right, all in favor of the fiscal year 2024 salary schedules as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same?
I'd like to go into executive session for legal issues.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of going into legal, or into executive session for legal?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same? We need...